It is now six thirty one. This is the May tenth, two thousand and twenty one Board of Education meeting. Is there a motion to open the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Mary, please open the voting.
It's not letting me do it.
Okay, we can do this all in favor. Hi.
Hi.
So we have everyone in favor. Absent for that is Chris Tice, Yorgos, Stibides, and Alex Kriegsman. We're going to move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Stand up here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Little bit of a change from our regular agenda. We are going to move to item three in the agenda, which is the budget hearing, with which Ms. Buscemi is going to give us a presentation, after which will be public input, so that if there are questions on the budget, the public can then ask at that point. So barring any other business, we'll turn this over to Mr. Nichols and Ms. Buscemi.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to start sharing my screen with everyone. And let me just get to my presentation. Hold on. Wait a second. Can everybody see that or no?
We cannot. We just see your.
Do you see the presentation?
We do not.
We do not, okay. Let me see.
We see the.
On your browser.
I'm thinking, it says your screen sharing is paused. Let me just see if I can restart this. I think actually. Sorry. Just give me one minute. Stop share. Let me just try this one more time. Share. You are screen sharing. Now.
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay. That's good. Okay. So tonight, we have our budget hearing and we're going to review the budget again. And actually, Scott, are you sharing the screen? Or did I push on yours? I think you might have to move the slides, Scott, because I don't think this is the PowerPoint. Is it? Hey, hey. All right, let me try.
I can't control those slides.
You don't have it either. Okay. All right, we're going to try one more time. Sorry, guys. Let me see something, what's going on? Slide show. Let me just exit here now. Okay. Just go F and A five. Okay. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Technology.
I know. And I know I don't have a good internet connection today because I got an email from Optimum. It told me that there was an outage and I was thinking, oh, that's not a good thing in my area. So, all right, let's see. Oh, this is working. Perfect.
Hopefully, we'll all be together in a room doing this pretty soon, so we don't have to worry about the Zoom remote stuff, right?
That'd be great, okay. Alrighty, so the budget was adopted on April twentieth and the last presentation I did was on April twelfth. So nothing in the budget has changed since then. But we do have to talk about the contingent budget this evening. So I will be showing you some new slides on what would happen if the budget doesn't pass on on May eighteenth. So our proposed budget next year is forty-four million, eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And it carries with it a tax levy increase of one point four eight percent, which is under the tax levy limit of one point four nine percent. And it is actually under the cap for the tenth straight year. The district has stayed under the cap since the establishment of the property tax levy limit. The budget also carries with it a very small increase of one point two two percent, but it does preserve all programs, extracurricular activities and athletics. It also includes funding for a full day pre-K program, which we're all very excited about at the Learning Center, and the continued investment in instructional technology and equipment. So this is a chart that shows all of the tax levy cap factors that we report to New York State since the beginning. The first year the tax cap was twelve thirteen. And this is actually available on Open Book New York, which is a New York State website that is sponsored by the State Comptroller's Office. And any taxpayer, anybody in the state can go on the website and they can look at trend information for any local government in the state. So you'll see that if you went onto the website, you could find data on our expenses, you could find data on revenues, you could find the tax cap data. There's a lot of information up there. So all of this is what's been reported through the years. And the only thing that you'll see is on the bottom where it says total tax levy limit adjusted for transfers plus exclusions. They have us at one point five, but our real limit is really one point four nine three two. They actually averaged it out. So you'll see that in the ten-year span, you'll see one point five in two thousand and fifteen also. But at the one point four nine three, it is the lowest limit we've really had over the ten-year period. So it is very low. Our actual tax levy increase of one point four eight percent is the lowest it's been in the past seven years. So the last time we had a one point four eight percent tax levy increase was in two thousand and fifteen. Why did our levy limit increase drastically from one year to the next? So you'll see for the current school year, our levy limit was three point one and it is down now to the one point four nine. And a lot of factors, the cause of the decline was mostly due to the tax-based growth factor, which is this number up here. It went from one point five five percent down to one point oh three. This factor represents all brick and mortar construction that is happening throughout the district and its impact on the assessed values of the district. So that that number went down. The allowable levy growth factor, which everyone really calls the two percent, this has not been two percent for the last two years. So it was, the last time it was two percent was in for the nineteen twenty budget year. For the current budget year, it's actually one point eight one percent. And for the proposed budget for next year, the two percent levy growth factor actually went down to one point two three percent. And then the third factor that really impacted our levy limit this year and the reason why it is so low is because of our exclusions. So our exclusions to the levy limit went from one million, nine seventy-one, nine sixty-six down to one million, six eighty-four, three sixty. And that really was a great thing because it really represented a lot of debt that we were able to pay off. So our exclusion for debt service declined. And we also do not have a transfer of capital this year, as we did in previous years. It was a fifty thousand dollar transfer of capital and that went away. So this is the reason why our levy limit is really one point four nine percent. And we're going out with the one point four eight percent, but we were able to maintain everything within the budget for next year. And this is just a chart showing the history. You could see every year, the district's been under the levy limit. Some years, you know, they were way under. So some years, they didn't tax, the tax levy was under by six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. So and our levy limit, it hasn't been consistent throughout. You know, you have a high of four point seven percent here and then you have a low of the one point four nine percent. So it's really hard to predict how much tax levy we can actually levy every year or how much property taxes we can actually collect every year. And this really does have an impact on long-term planning too, because we never know. We may have a year where the levy growth factor is two percent and we might have a year where the levy growth factor is, you know, just over one percent. So it is, does make it harder to come up with long-range planning when you're looking at numbers that vary so much. And this is all the revenue sources that will support next year's budget. So next year's budget is the one point two two percent over the current year, which is roughly five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars. Our tax levy is right here, right in the blue line, and it's going up the one point four eight percent. And the tax levy is really the, you know, it really supports the budget more than anything else. We don't receive a lot of state aid, even though our state aid is increasing. State aid funds a little more than four percent of our budget every year. You know, that has a lot to do with the district's wealth factors. Some districts' wealth factors are very low and they receive a high amount of state aid. But unfortunately, we can't rely on state aid every year to support our budget. So and then we have appropriated fund balance, which is down here in the green. The current school year, we appropriated a little under one point six million in fund balance. And next year, we really tried to reduce that number. And we're reducing it by six hundred thousand, a little over six hundred thousand. And we're bringing that number to nine hundred and eighty-one thousand, forty-five. And then the total other revenues, the big increases are non-resident tuition. We were able to look at our students that were being sent to us from Wayne Scott and Sagaponic and also look at all of our parents who play students. We saw that for nineteen twenty, we had roughly forty-five students attending the district. The current year, we had about fifty-seven students attending the district. So we are projecting conservatively for next year and we're projecting about fifty-one students. And that's, but we are seeing that the fifty-one students is leading to an increase in that revenue line of one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, fifty-five dollars. And then the next item we have is really the transportation shared services contracts that we have with Wayne Scott and Sagaponic. And we also do a lot of transportation runs for Bridge Hampton. So we felt that we could also increase this line a little bit for next year. And we felt confident that we would collect all of these funds. And we also know that by sharing these services, it also helps us pay for our regular transportation costs. Because right now, this is supporting roughly thirty-five percent of our total transportation costs. So this shows the impact. And for the town of Southampton, the one point four eight percent tax levy increase, if everything else stays the same, meaning if the value of your home stays the same, if assessed values in the whole town stays the same, then your, the median home in Southampton, town of Southampton and town of East Hampton, is going to see a tax levy increase of just under sixty dollars for the year. So for Southampton, you have fifty-seven dollars and eighty cents. And for East Hampton, you have fifty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents for the median home in both towns. So but please remember, this is assuming that everything else is staying the same. And but assessed values, we know, change from year to year. It's based on how many people agree their taxes. It's based on market value. It's also based on, you know, changes in law and people filing for exemptions. So even though if the assessed value of your home, if it increases or decreases, doesn't necessarily mean that your taxes are going to increase and decrease in the same percentage or in the same way. And this is the proposed budget. It's shown in two ways and we're going to see it in a third way on the next slide. But it's shown on the top by function or department and on the bottom, it's by object or type of expense. So the only line you're going to see in both charts, in both tables, is employee benefits. So employee benefits is broken out in both tables just because it is such a large, large expense. And the other big difference is salaries. So on the bottom, you'll see salaries broken out for the whole district. But in the top table, salaries are actually embedded in each department. So instruction, this item includes salaries, general support, transportation. All the salaries are in all of those lines. The main items that are decreasing from the proposed budget to the current year budget, most of the decreases are coming from debt service that we talked about when we looked at the factors with tax levy limit. So we have roughly two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars just in this, showing this table of debt service going down. And into fund transfers includes the fifty thousand dollar transfer of capital that we discussed and also transfers to the debt service fund. On the bottom, sorry, on the bottom of the slide, you'll see that those decreases are broken out a little bit, slightly more. But I put both tables in order of the impact on the budget. So you'll see salaries is fifty-four point two percent of the budget. Benefits is twenty-four point seven percent of the budget. And then all the way down to the bottom, you'll see, you know, computer software, which is like less than one percent of the budget and debt service, which is half percent and so on and so forth. The biggest line items that really drive the budget each year are salaries and employee benefits. And you'll see the largest increase in the employee benefit area just because all of our employee benefit rates did go up. So our health insurance rate went up, our dental went up, our retirement costs went up, and they're all reflected in this line. And this is the same budget shown in three parts. So by law, we're required to show the budget in this way. And the three components is the administrative component, the program component, and the capital component. So the capital component is the simplest component. This includes all the expenditures for our facilities department, including their employee benefits. And then all of our debt service is all included in the capital component. The administrative component includes all of the expenditures related to the administrative departments. So that would be the Board of Education, District Clerk, Superintendent, Business Office, and then all of the principals also, the principals. There, all the expenditures related to their offices are included in the administrative component. And then everything else falls into the program component, including transportation. And you can see the current budget broken down by component, the proposed budget broken down by component. And then in the fourth column, you'll see the contingent budget. So at this point in time, we need to determine how much of the budget are we able to actually move forward with if the budget fails? And we have to go on contingency. There's very strict rules on how much the administrative component can actually increase if we do go on contingency. So for now, you'll, I don't know if you could see, but the budget-to-budget increase for the proposed budget is the one point two two percent. But for the contingent budget, if we do have to move forward with one, that would be point eight four percent. And all of the detailed budget can be found online. And if you go to this website, our website and click on this link, you'll see all the budget information on there. And we'll talk a little bit more about what you'll see up there in the next few slides. So if the proposed budget fails on May eighteenth, the board can decide to do, you know, a few different things. They could either resubmit the defeated budget or revise budget on the statewide budget revote date on June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Or they could decide not to have a revote and say, we're just going to move forward with the contingent budget immediately, which should be enacted on July first. And the contingent budget, though, would mean reductions of at least a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars in expenditures for equipment, other administrative costs. In addition, there will be some slight reductions in student programs and services and facility usage would also be limited. If the resubmitted or revised budget is defeated on June fifteenth, if one is put forward to the voters, the board has no choice at that point. They must adopt a contingent budget. So under the contingent budget, other than having a cap on your administrative costs, there's also a cap on your tax levy. So under the property tax cap legislation, when a district adopts a contingent budget, the tax levy cannot be increased for any reason. And the tax levy limit is set at zero percent. And there's no exclusions allowed under a contingent budget. So as a result, the amount of appropriated fund balance used to support the proposed budget will have to increase by roughly four hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars to make up for the loss of five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars in tax levy. And if we're not actually able to increase the appropriate fund balance by that much, we may have to make additional cuts. So the revenue and other financing sources that would support a contingent budget looks a little different. And pretty much everything above the yellow line would stay the same. None of that would change. But you could see in the blue line, the general fund tax levy, there would be zero increase. So we would have to carry forward the same tax levy as the current year, which is thirty-nine million, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and six hundred and thirteen. I'm sorry, thirty-nine million, seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars. And our appropriate fund balance now would actually have to be increased unless we're able to make other cuts to the budget. So the total budget-to-budget increase would be point eight four percent. Then the contingent budget would be forty-four million, seven hundred and two thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And it would force us to increase our appropriated fund balance unless we can make additional cuts because we would have to make up for that tax levy that we weren't able to collect more taxpayers. So the three-part budget, you can also find that online. Online, you'll see the twenty-one, twenty-two budget statement. And in the budget statement, you'll, is included the three-part budget, the property tax report card, the academic report cards, and the financial transparency information. Administrative compensation disclosure is in there. And also the exemption report for both tax and jurisdictions are there. And the exemption report is actually interesting because it does list every single exemption that taxpayers may be entitled to. So you might want to look at the exemption report and see whether or not you would fall under maybe another exemption and you could always file with the town to see if you qualify.
Right.
And this is the budget notice. This is being mailed out to taxpayers. It actually went in the mail today. And everyone's going to receive this. On one side is the English version, the other side is the Spanish version. And this is where you can see our budget increase is one point two two percent. But the budget notice includes a change in Consumer Price Index, which is actually one point two three percent. So our budget-to-budget increase is actually lower than the CPI this year. And this is where we have to include all the contingent budget information also. And on the bottom, we have all the contingent budget information included on the notice too. So this is why we need to calculate that information in order for us to provide this to the public and mail this out to homes. And this can also be found online, since this presentation will be online tomorrow. And then the budget newsletter is also on the website. And this budget newsletter is in English and Spanish. So you'll click, there's two separate newsletters. One that is completely in English and one's completely in Spanish. So it's definitely easier to read. And you can also find some really great information on there on exactly what you'll see on the ballot and you'll see the exact wording of our propositions right in that newsletter. And our proposition, so we have three additional propositions in addition to approving the budget for next year. And Proposition Two is the establishment of the Capital Reserve Fund. So we're asking voters to approve this proposition because it will provide us a way to save for future renovations without having to borrow and without having to issue debt. So if the voters are able to approve this for us, we'll be able to start saving money for future capital projects. The reserve is capped at fifteen million dollars and we cannot spend any money from the Capital Reserve Fund without separate voter approval. So even though we'll be saving the money, we have to go out to the voters and say, listen, this is what we want to do with this money and will you approve that at another vote? So they have total control over how these monies are spent. Proposition Three is the purchase of one new bus. So we're replacing a bus. So we'd like to purchase that from our transportation reserve. So that's coming from another reserve fund. It's not coming from the budget itself. It's not coming from tax levy. And Proposition Four is just changing the voter registration, the way it's being done. And that's, Proposition Four is actually going to save us money. So the establishment of these three propositions or the approval of these three propositions have absolutely no impact on the tax levy or the budget for next year. So they really do stand alone. And this is the results, our budget vote results that we've had. You can see the part of the chart in yellow is when the property tax cap is in effect. And since the tax cap has been in effect, we've had over sixty percent voter approval of the budget each year. And we've had a lot of support from the community throughout. But you can see, we have over six thousand, five hundred and seventeen current registered voters right now. And last year, we did receive, you know, a very high voter turnout because it was absentee ballot, but that was still only about thirty percent of what our registered voters are the year before. I think it was seventeen percent and the year before that, you're talking about seven point nine percent. So community, we have in-person voting this year, but the community members can still request an absentee ballot, especially if they, you know, they're afraid of contracting COVID or, you know, they're, in any way, they just would feel more comfortable voting from home. You're still able to do that. And we just hope that everybody just comes out and exercises their right to vote that day. And the budget vote and election is going to be held in the high school gym and between the hours of seven and nine PM. And for the absentee ballot applications, all the information is right here in this paragraph. You can really request a ballot up until the day before, as long as you come, if you send somebody to come pick it up. And also you could drop off the completed ballot, you know, up until that day, no later than five PM that day. So at this time, I would like to thank the administrative team and their staff and all of my staff in the business office for doing such a great job this year and developing such a fiscally sound budget. And if anybody has any questions?
Board member, any questions for Jennifer? Questions from the board at this time?
I just have a question.
Sure.
Given that, you know, we're, everyone does everything over Zoom these days and, you know, there's no morning program where like a lot of parents are then going to go over and vote. And I just anticipate this might be below, especially since there's also not a contested board election. I'd imagine this might be the lowest attended vote. I could be wrong. But is there a minimum number of votes generally to pass the budget? Or is it just like yes versus no?
It's just yes versus no, and we just need over fifty percent yes and the budget would pass.
Great. Sandy, I'm sorry, did you have a question?
I did. I just wanted to, you know, make a very clear point that this is an absolutely amazing budget. The fact that we went into COVID this year and had as much staff as we brought on, the procedures that had to be put in place, the hand sanitizers, the temperature, the tents, et cetera, et cetera. I just want to just give a huge kudos because we're at one point two three percent increase. That is absolutely amazing. And it really is because of the team that we have leading our district. And I just don't think we said it enough during the process because it was just like, it was easy and we just kept going. There wasn't a lot of questions. But I just think it really needs to be stated that this was an outstanding job by everybody to make this happen. And I personally am proud of this budget. So thank you.
Brian, I had a question.
Sure.
Of course, I just want to amen to what Sandy just said. It doesn't, enough credit has not been given. Really, really impressive. Jennifer, I just had a question. What is, on the out-of-district tuition, I saw that there's an increase from what we budgeted for last year to what we budgeted for this year. What's the breakdown, if you have it readily available, of what we budgeted versus what the actual number was? Seems like there's usually a pretty big spread on that.
Well, I think for the current school year, we had twelve additional students attend. And there was no way that they would have known that we were getting twelve additional students. And that really is going to be the big difference from the current school year. But I can see, I don't know if I have it on this information. Let's see. Well, I can let you know that for the current, so last year, they budgeted eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine forty-five. And for the current school year, we collected over a million dollars already for the current school year. And we still have a few months to go. So we're definitely going to be even over the number budgeted for next year.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other board member questions for Jennifer? Okay. Is there anybody from the public that has a question about the budget? Now would be the time to raise your hand in the chat room. Please just, and just type your whole name so we have that for the record. Mr. Fisher, are there any hands?
None that I can see.
This is also the time for public input number one. So if the public is here and watching and they have a question they'd like to ask to the board, now would be the time to do that, whether it's budget-related or otherwise.
We have one hand that just went up. I think Kevin Deller. Hold on one second. Go ahead, Kevin.
Kevin, if you could just, just before you start, Kevin, if you could just type your name into the chat room so that our clerk has it for the record. This does not count as your time, so don't worry.
Okay, great. Did it come through?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Okay, great. Hi, everyone. And Jennifer, thank you for that presentation on the budget. Greatly appreciated and great job. I just, you know, want to follow up. We've been, this is not a budget question. This is a park contract question. And we've been asking questions, both emailing and verbally regarding the the process of the park contract. And we really haven't received any responses from any of the board members as to to where we stand and what has transpired since we started in January. You know, I'd like to to start off with the question and I'll, I guess, ask all my questions at one shot. And then you could follow from there. Number one being where, where are we in the park contract? And then after that, you know, Brian, you had mentioned in previous meetings that, you know, under the current contract that that the board could not direct, you know, what the park does with the funds that the school gives it. But my question from January was, did anyone ask the question during the last year? You know, from when COVID started, was it whether B O E, B O E liaison, athletic department? And we weren't using fields. We were paying the park for field rentals. And we weren't using the fields. So by saying that we can't tell them what to do, I think reasonably we could ask the question since we weren't using the fields. What are we doing with this money? What about the safety concerns that the school mentioned, not mentioned, stated in not only this contract but previous contract about immediate safety concerns? I feel like we need to be better stewards in following up with safety and school requests to the park. It took almost three years to get an immediate safety concern rectified. And I, and I think that's something that going forward and everything that we're trying to discuss and is about going forward is is something that we need to tighten up. We need to get more checks and balances. We need the board of liaison reporting liaison to the park, reporting back. Where do we stand on this particular issue, especially when it's something that's time sensitive as immediate safety concern? Things like tick spraying once, once a year. I, I think we need to readdress those things. Again, for the safety of our children and to make a better environment for them. I'd like to know where we stand in the process. We've asked if there was any public input to the contract at all. And we really haven't heard anything from anybody regarding all the questions that we emailed in and actually asked verbally. So I can end there. Thank you.
Sure. Great. Thanks for the question. And I know Mr. Nichols has been working up there, so I I'll turn it over to him for an update. And I believe he's been in touch with you and some other parents as well with an update on those things. So Jeff, please.
Jeff's on mute. Jeff, you're on mute.
There we go. So let me start by saying that Kevin and a group of parents were kind enough to spend a Friday afternoon giving me a tour of the park and pointing out from their perspective areas that they thought were safety concerns as well as facility needs. Following that meeting with Kevin and the group of parents, I toured the facility with our athletic director, Mr. Malone and Ms. Carrier, who are the building principals. Mr. Malone actually coached at Mass Ashen Muir for many years. And Ms. Carrier was a collegiate athlete at the division one level, so I was interested in their feedback as well. And their observations were in many respects similar to the parent group. So without getting into detail, because I'm not permitted to do so, a lot of the issues addressed in my tour with the parents and with the administrators are included in the district's approach to negotiations as it relates to moving forward with the park board and and what we would like to see in the new contract. So beyond that, I really can't talk about current status, except that the current contract runs out June thirtieth. So we're in the midst of articulating our position as it relates to what we would like to see from July one forward. And hopefully we'll have some more information soon.
Great. So for the record, Kevin, I think we have been responsive. You've had meetings with the superintendent up there. We've taken your feedback. And we're applying those to our current negotiations, which are not being negotiated in public, just because it's a contractual issue. So the voices have been heard. We've addressed that. We're addressing the checks and balances. We're directing we're addressing the safety concerns and the improvement concerns. Once finalized, then that'll be disclosed to the public, but the current contract stands through the year. And we're working to have a better one going forward, which addresses those concerns that you've discussed with our superintendent and our building principals. Anything else from any board members on that point? Any other questions, Mr. Fisher?
Yeah, we have Tracy Cavaniola.
Tracy, if you could just type your full name into the chat room, so we have that for the record. That does not count toward your time. And then please.
I can't see where to type it in.
Great. Thanks so much. Tell us why you're here or what we could do for you.
Same, same follow-up. The facilities and we do, as this group, want to thank Jeff for, for walking with us and listening to all of our concerns. And it was a very good meeting. I think we have we have a lot of parents who you don't normally see out there because this is a huge concern for all of us. Because, and I, I'm, I'm just gonna, I, I'm only on this to state for the record the questions that I have. It, it, it isn't really been addressed in what we spoke about already, other than you're dealing with it. And as soon as we can, we'll, we'll try and get the information, however, we need to, to keep following up because it, this is super important. Not only for the kids, but for the future of the school. Because at this point, we clearly don't have facilities that are up to par for our children's sports. And whether that means with the, 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 I'm going to just start with number one. Safety issues. We, we know there are many. The dugouts just aren't safe for the kids. The fields are not flat, the, the main baseball field. And this has been a, a point made through several different organizations that, you know, the, where the catcher has to sit, you can't even see second base. And with the mounds, the way that they are, the way that the grass is, it, the, a, a, a player running to first base could easily roll an ankle on that hill. It should be completely flat. Not, not to mention, it should also, we should look into turf because as we've seen, the batting cage is extremely successful. And the way that it was installed is also ecologically sound. And it didn't, it, those, those concerns where those rubber pellets would be an issue aren't a concern anymore with the technology. So number two, again, financially, money going to the park, it seems to be going nowhere other than just paying for the, us to, to show up. And that makes no sense to me. When the park is already paying for their maintenance staff to cut the grass, why are we paying to cut the grass as well? Why aren't we allowed to say that we, we want improvements? And yes, I think Jeff, that was the first step of meeting with you to do that. But it, it has to be heard. And this money can't keep being fed to the park to go nowhere or to things that we don't even know they're going to. I'm not sure where they, they found the rest of the money for that playground. But I, I think the school needs to be a little more legitimate in, in spending the money and knowing where it's going and saying, okay, we wanted that and we got it. Number three, the list of the improvements to the park. And is the park or school overseeing? I know there's a liaison, but how involved are they? And to make sure that they get this done. Number four, is the park capable? Are they actually capable of maintaining the facilities the way the school needs for use? Field conditions, dugouts, bathrooms, areas for spectators, which they refuse to, to keep, keep in place for the parents to sit and watch the, the players. Changing areas for the kids. As of now, there's a resounding no, in my opinion. And they are in breach of contract, also in my opinion, because of all the grade levels. Sports cannot use the facilities because the park will not alter to make the accommodations for our school use. Number five, what does the future look like? Where can we go if we're not going to use the park? And how are they going to optimize the fields at the back of the school to accommodate more sports year round, i.e. turf? Maybe, I, I don't know what can happen back there, but it, it certainly needs to be looked at. I don't think we can go on one more school year as we are. And I know that contract's up and that's good.
Correct. So, so that is up. We, again, just to clarify the record, not for you, but for everyone watching, are not legally allowed to negotiate a contract in public in terms of terms and what we're asking for. So as board members, we heard all the public feedback. We've conveyed that to our attorneys. And that is then part of the negotiation. We're, we're not allowed to specifically say what the negotiation is legally in terms of when you're negotiating a contract. It's a privilege back and forth. I think I speak for all of us that we know the park is not up to the standards that we would like for our school district and the community.
I think that's literally the first time I've heard someone say that.
I think we've all said that throughout. I, I, I would, I would disagree with that. I mean, Sandy's been up there for years. Chris has been up there for years. They, they've all, they've both. And I'm just using them as examples because they've been on the board longer than, than the other members have all said that throughout this conversation since I've been here. So we, we are all in agreement with that. We're all trying to work toward that. We just have to work in the legal parameters. Our school attorney is working on that with us and our superintendent, Mr. Nichols, to get a better result as we want to continue that relationship. But under the proper conditions and the right checks and balances. Now that we have an opportunity because the contract's up, all of those things are actively being discussed. The conversation of turf is a separate conversation because that can't be part of a, a contract that was, that needs to be a vote on a capital improvement, as we did some years ago, which didn't go forward. But that is a conversation for a different day, but something that, in my mind.
That big picture. In my opinion, everything is looked at as a whole. Because we've got to, we've got to make, we've got to provide facilities for the kids to play.
And at the last meeting, and at the last meeting, we said that that's part of the facilities review and part of what the recommendations are going to be for improvement of all those facilities. So that process has started and those discussions are ongoing.
I, I would, I was just going to add, in terms of turf, just because some people in the public may not know this, legally, we cannot use the money we collect in the school district to install turf on a field that is not owned by the district. So if the thought was, you know, and I'm just using this as an example, the thought is, you know, why aren't we installing a turf field at the park? We can't do that.
No, and I clearly understand that. And I think the point I'm trying to make is where you guys can't implement what you need to at the school, through the school, there's a community out here that will. So we need to know what's on your list, what you're asking for, how you're going to follow through with it. And then if you can't or, or the park won't listen to you, we'll go another route. Because the park belongs to everybody and it, it should be a facility that we, we, it should grow with our kids. I think a good analogy is, are you going to make your kids play with cleats that your grandfather played in? I mean, we have to grow with, with, with what's going on here and keep the kids competitive. And they need to have a pride of playing on fields that when opposing teams come to our fields, the kids don't feel ashamed or embarrassed or, and that is part of, part of being successful in sports as well. That, that batting cage is, is used to the maximum.
We understand.
Yeah. And so we need, we do need to work together to know what your list is. And when you're available to give that to us, I know you will. And then we'll take it from there.
Great. We will do that. And we will be in touch. So we thank you for your comments. Are there any other hands up, Mr. Fisher?
Yes, we have Kevin Martin.
Sure. Kevin, type your name into the chat room and then you can tell us in three minutes, anything you'd like.
Yep. Hi, how are you?
Good.
Good. First of all, Tracy, thank you very much. It was excellent. I just want to state so everybody knows, so all the taxpayers know that we, as a school district and taxpayers, that we pay the park thirty-five thousand dollars a month to use those fields. We only use them six months a year. For six, six months, it's thirty-five thousand. If you want to go twelve months, it's seventeen thousand dollars a month, which is absurd, first of all. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you. I just want to state that I personally, this is my own personal opinion. I don't think that the park contract should be renewed at all. I think the money that we're paying them is outrageous. And then if we need improvements, the school has to pay extra to pay for improvements. This is private property. Unfortunately, it should be public property, but it's not. It was left in the original deed to the children of Sag Harbor. Somehow along the line, I don't know what happened, but that just went out the window. And I just want to say, I'm, I'm not a lawyer, but I don't know if this was right or wrong for me to say. I think the school lawyer should actually contact the district attorney's office and actually look into this. Because this is not right for the school, the taxpayers, to have to pay for this and then improvements like this. Again, I don't know if, you know, I'm not a lawyer, obviously, you are. But, you know, this should really be looked at. I think that's about all I have.
Thank you. And again, as we said earlier, we are, it is, it is under review. It is being addressed. And that'll come out in due time.
What's under review?
Everything's under review that I just said. If you were listening, the contract, the terms, the safety concerns. Everything is being looked at. Everything has been forwarded to our attorney.
Well, I mean, some of the safety concerns go back three, four years that still haven't been addressed. I mean, it, it's just, it's ridiculous. These are our children playing here.
We understand. We've heard and I'm telling you.
And I'm not saying this to you as a board. The park should do.
Did he just get, did he just get cut off?
Hold on, let's see what's going on here. Kevin? All right, hang on one sec. Let me see if I can get him back. I, I'm not even seeing him now. I do see, I believe it was the original, the, the first speaker tonight.
His hand is up.
There we go. Okay, he's back. All right, hold on one second, please.
Yes, Scott hooked up Kevin Deller instead of Kevin Martin.
Yeah, you're actually both up at the same time because, but go ahead.
Go ahead. Can you hear me? I think for the park board to spend taxpayer money to redo their playground, I think is, it says a lot about what they're doing. I think it's absurd for them to do that. And we all know what they did over there with the improvements. And that was taxpayer money for private property.
We do not know that, so.
Well, they, okay, I, I thought they made it clear that they could use the money for whatever they want and they used it for the playground.
That is not my understanding of it, so.
Okay, it, it is mine, but okay.
Okay, that's, if you have information, please send it over, but it is not our information that they use.
But thank you for your time.
Okay, hopefully I have this right now, Brian. Um, the original speaker, Kevin, is now back online.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
We can.
There we go. Uh, yeah, Brian, just one follow up on on protocol. When when we email in questions, wouldn't it be beneficial, you know, because we we want, when we're discussing these topics, that there are a lot of people listening that don't call in, they don't write in. But it's important for them to know what the public is is asking. And so when we, people write in questions, wouldn't it be in our best interest to at the very least read those questions to the public, so they're aware of what the other, other people are are inquiring about?
So we read questions that are emailed to us at every meeting?
Out loud?
Is that what you're asking for, I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think that was part of my first question is that, you know, we asked, we email in questions as well, and uh, I think it would behoove us to read those questions to the public, regardless of what the topic is, that at the park or whatever. But um, so the public is informed with of these issues as well.
I mean, it would be on a case by case basis, because some questions are answered easily, they're individual, they're not specific. So to sort that out. Would you like me to answer your question, or would you like to talk over me? Because we're giving you a lot of time here, and we're trying to just be responsive to what you're saying, okay?
Apologize.
Thank you. So some question, we're not reading every question, because some questions are answered um, through email. Um, everyone knows when the hearings are, so if they'd like to come to a meeting, they can ask that question out loud. Or some people put in the email, can this be read at the next meeting, in which those are read at the next meeting? So if if that's the case, and you you'd want to send in an email where can this be read at the next meeting, we would be happy to do that. Um, I just think reading every email the board receives, um, in my opinion, wouldn't be appropriate.
Okay.
Brian, I would add that there are people that email the board that may perhaps do not want that to be read publicly.
Right, that's why I said.
If I I think it would, I think it would hinder our scaring feedback from the public if we're reading every email when some folks don't want their email, their their communication be made public.
I agree, that's hence when people say, you know, can you read this at the next meeting? We make a practice to read those at the next meeting. So, but I think it's a good point, and thank you for that, and we'll look for those emails if they say that. Okay, do we have any other hands up, Mr. Fisher?
We do, we have Kevin Martin, who's requesting to speak again.
Okay.
Go ahead, Kevin.
No, I'm I'm sorry, I'm not, that was old.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, moving on to item five point one tonight. Um, we don't have anything under that, uh, section six, the superintendent's report, Mr. Nichols.
Uh, thank you, Brian. Uh, I want to cover a few things. Um, first, uh, I want to talk a little bit about um, our recognition that the New York State School Boards uh, mailed to the district uh, a week and a half ago. Uh, the New York State School Boards Association um, has been in existence since uh, eighteen ninety-six, for those of you who don't know. And it's the body that oversees or advises school boards throughout New York State. And uh, they run something called the Recognition Program, which is comprised of four achievement levels. And basically what they do is they recognize board members who've gone through uh, extensive professional development as a board member. And those professional development workshops can include uh, legal workshops, convention related events, custom board retreats, uh, et cetera. And this year, uh, they wanted to uh, recognize as a, one of our board members, Sandy Cruel. Um, we're reaching level two, uh, which is a pretty significant achievement. And uh, I wanted to just uh, congratulate Sandy on that. She uh, first got elected to the board in nineteen ninety-nine, uh, twenty, what is that, twenty-two years ago? And she has served, this is her twelfth year on the Board of Education, so it was somewhat uh, broken up. But during that time, she's been a tremendous advocate uh, for our school system and has always uh, been an advocate for our students. And so uh, it's really an honor, and I want to congratulate her uh, on this achievement.
Congratulations, Sandy, thank you.
Congratulations, Sandy, great job.
Thank you.
Good job, Sandy. Well done.
Thank you. Yeah, I I was able to attend the national convention this year, and then I did um, a negotiation webinar, um, a diversity webinar, and um, a communicate, two communications webinars. So I just feel it's important, and a financial, um, just because I feel it's important to just kind of try to stay up to date on the things that are changing so quickly and in in this world. So, thank you, Jeff, for those kind words, I appreciate it, and um, thank you. Thank you. Well, and I did, Mary did give me my little, my little certificate that they sent, so uh, thank you, Mary, for getting that to me.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
So the second uh, issue I want to talk about is an update from the New York State Department of Health uh, regarding uh, end of the year events and the capacity limits that that's. So initially, uh, the capacity, I shouldn't say initially, it's changed about seven or eight times, I believe. But uh, most recently, it was at um, two hundred people for end of the year celebrations, and that would have impacted how we ran high school graduation, possibly uh, prom, whether it was a senior prom or a junior senior prom. Perhaps uh, elementary moving up, middle school moving up, those kinds of things. Uh, and all of that is still being planned. But the change uh, that came out about two weeks ago is effective uh, May tenth, which I believe is today. Uh, and it increases that capacity limit from two hundred to five hundred. So that provides greater flexibility for districts to run events. Um, such as the ones I just mentioned, in a more traditional manner. Obviously, there are still social distancing concerns and other COVID-related um, safety measures that we do have to follow. Uh, but as it relates to what we'll be doing this spring, it's more of a quote, return to normal. And the building principles are in the process of planning and putting out information about uh, what form those events will take. The one thing we've learned uh, throughout this pandemic is that the guidance changes um, pretty rapidly. So I wouldn't be surprised if what I'm announcing today is perhaps different thirty days from now. But if the trajectory continues on the path that it is, if anything, um, with the increase uh, in vaccination levels, hopefully the guidance is even relaxed even more. So any, any questions about capacity, uh, changes in the capacity guidance?
I I just had a comment, I just wanted to, you know, that that sounds like good news, that 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 these events, you know, our kids and parents will be able to enjoy them more, and also just want to commend the administration. I know it's been a a difficult challenge trying to deal with and navigate all these constantly changing guidelines. Um, so, so I think that's good news, though.
Thank you.
Question about, yeah, I just had one question about prom. Um, just because I know that by nature, it's not an event that's good for social distancing generally. So I know there's a lot of planning still being done, but just big picture, like i- is the current planning that it's like under ten outdoors, like our kids were gonna be required to wear masks? What, like, just big picture stuff, curious about.
On the prom you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, with regard to prom, I think, I think big picture, uh, masks will be required, except when they're, when the students or the attendees are eating. Um, it's going to be outside, because we know that outside is a safer venue for um, students, for anybody for that matter. Uh, and then the, the, one of the considerations, and I'm going to talk about it a little bit later in my superintendent's report, is one of the ways to make uh, prom safer, uh, graduation safer, uh, school safer, is to increase the number of students uh, and adults who are vaccinated. Uh, and so we'll talk a little bit about that in a few minutes. Um, is that sort of what you were getting at in terms of big picture?
Yeah, because I just realized it's like kind of hard to dance with your date six feet apart, so I just wasn't sure what other things.
True. Uh, so the, the last thing that I want to talk about, and and I actually wrote the superintendent's report, jotted down my notes a few days ago. Um, but it's, there was information that came out today, so I'll start with the information. So uh, earlier today, the FDA, uh, the Food and Drug Administration approved this, the uh, COVID vaccine uh, for people uh, twelve to fifteen. So prior to that, it was the Pfizer vac- and this is the vaccine that is also approved for twelve to fifteen year olds. The, the, prior to that, the Pfizer vaccine was approved by both the FDA and the CDC Vaccine Advisory Committee uh, for administration for persons sixteen and up. Today, the FDA announced that they gave approval for twelve to fifteen, and the CDC Advisory Committee is scheduled to meet on Wednesday, at which time they're expected to approve it for uh, students or young people twelve to fifteen. Now, um, in anticipation of this, uh, I had been in touch with the Suffolk County Department of Health uh, regarding the possibility of setting our school system up as a point of distribution. So Suffolk County had contacted schools and was trying to ascertain whether or not we would be interested in being appointed distribution site where they would come in and vaccinate our students. Um, we had indicated that we would be interested in that, and that was last week. I heard from them today, uh, and initially, by the way, their, their offer was to vaccinate sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen year olds, sixteen and up. So that could include nineteen or twenty, I guess, if those students were still in high school. We had indicated that we were interested in that. Uh, today, they contacted us and said they would like to expand it once the CDC Vaccine Advisory Committee approves the Pfizer vaccine to become a point of distribution site for vaccines for twelve and up and families. So um, we're continuing to follow up on that with them. Uh, and the, the roadmap for that happening is basically, we're supposed to receive, when I say we, the school district, a survey that we're going to administer to um, eligible parties, which will basically be uh, families and students twelve uh, and up. And try to get a a baseline reading of how many people would be interested. And then we're going to share that with the Suffolk County Department of Health, and they'll determine whether or not they would come out here uh, on a specific day or days uh, and vaccinate our students and their families. And so we should have more guidance on that in the next couple of days. Uh, immediately after that telephone call with the Suffolk County Department of Health this afternoon, I received a call from a local physician who has been very active and proactive in trying to vaccinate our local community. Uh, and that physician uh, informed me that there, that he or she is tentatively planning on running a vaccine day on May twenty-second, and was articulating that opportunity uh, to our school community in anticipation of the guidance that was announced this afternoon, making uh, young people twelve and up eligible. Uh, and that's what those vaccination uh, days, days or day uh, would be targeted for. So we really have two options right now, and hopefully we'll have greater clarity in the next couple of days. But going back to uh, Jordana's comment about what will prom look like, and my comments about what graduation uh, may look like now that the capacity uh, limits have changed, all of this uh, can be safer uh, and with less restrictions, the more people who are vaccinated. Uh, with regard to the, 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 uh, the announcement today, with regard to twelve to fifteen year olds, uh, that study had basically two thousand two hundred and sixty uh, participants involved in it, and those participants, there were eighteen of them who tested positive, who didn't get the vaccine, there were zero participants who got the vaccine, who tested positive. So there was a hundred percent efficacy rate with regard to the twelve to fifteen year olds, which compared with the ninety-five percent efficacy rate with adults. The CDC, or rather Pfizer, is engaged in clinical study right now, uh, addressing six to twelve year olds. So I'm hopeful that prior to September, they might have some, some data and some guidance on that. But again, the more people who are vaccinated, and this is science based, the safer uh, our school system and those in attendance and our community for that matter will be. Any questions?
Uh, I have a question, thank you for that update. Um, this is kind of a tangential question, which is today I also saw Governor Cuomo announce that um, starting next school year, if you're attending a SUNY or Schoony, uh, CUNY uh, university, that you're going to be required to be vaccinated before you attend. Do you have any sense that this is going to be added to the required vaccination list in the public school system coming September?
I don't have a firm sense, except my understanding of of public entities, the school system's ability to mandate that would be somewhat related to the emergency use authorization that currently exists. So right now, the, the way that we're, we uh, are able to administer uh, COVID vaccine through an emergency use authorization, when that changes and becomes more permanent, you might see, and I'm speculating, you might see more leeway with regard to public being able to mandate it. You note to, you noted today that, that, that the New York State Public School System, Public College System, University System has mandated it for next year. That's been happening, as you know, Chris, for several months um, with private universities. So there is a move uh, towards that, and I think one of the key pieces is going to be when that emergency youth au- use authorization changes to a more permanent category, at which point I think it becomes more likely that we can mandate it similar to how you do with the immunizations required to attend school right now, mumps, measles, rubella, that kind of thing.
Right, and I wasn't suggesting that we as a district mandated, it was more at the state level, do we anticipate they're going to require it like they do so many other vacs- vaccines? So.
Uh, Brian, I just had a comment.
Sorry, guys, and I'm back, I lost the internet at my house, so it's uh, I'm back here now, so go ahead, please, Alex.
No, I was just gonna say that Jeff's, you know, thought about us possibly being a site, I think that's great. And I think, you know, as a district, whatever we can do to make vaccines available to to students and families who want them, I think that that's excellent. Um, so I'm happy to hear that.
I agree with that.
Will, will we be at, what, is it, if, if our numbers are too low, is it, i- is it worth it for us to reach out to Lake Bridgehampton and partner up with them on this? Is that a possibility that you thought of?
I think that's a a subsequent step, if this survey, if we go that route with Suffolk County uh, yields numbers that are too low for them to come, then we can explore that option. Uh, it's also, and this is all good news, but you're, the availability of vaccines is much greater than it was a month ago. So for instance, last Friday, Southampton College, you could have walked in and received a vaccine if you were sixteen or up. Obviously, it's, I think, um, beneficial and preferable to have our school as a, a point of distribution, because it's easier for people to come to the school versus driving to a a place that's relatively far away. I guess Southampton College is probably fifteen or twenty minutes. And if we can do it here, ease of use is important. Anything we can do to make it easier, I think is great. And going to your original question, if the numbers are, are low, uh, certainly we would reach out to other districts to see if we could get more creative.
Excellent.
Great.
Thank you.
I, I heard Hampton Bay's schools had a few nights of pop-ups that were very, very successful.
Yeah.
Right.
And so that uh, pretty much does it for the superintendent's report on my end. I'm gonna answer any questions if you have any.
Board members, any questions for Jeff, Mr. Nichols? Is there anyone from the public who has any, a question about what was just covered specifically by Mr. Nichols? Any hands, Mr. Fisher?
I don't see any.
Okay, uh, let's move on to section seven of tonight's. Okay. Let's move on to section seven of tonight's agenda, the Principals Report.
Why don't we start with Mr. Malone?
Evening, everyone. Thanks, Mr. Nichols. So to, I guess, given updates since our last meeting, our third, fourth and fifth grade students completed the ELA and mathematics state testing, and that was done pretty seamlessly. I think a lot, a lot of the students felt comfortable once they sat down for the actual exam because this year, I think as a result of some of the limitations that the state had with regards to field testing, normally when tests are being prepared, in previous years, the questions are field tested as a part of annual administration. With last year not, not being a year of ELA or math testing, the state recycled some questions. So in our building, as I'm sure in schools all throughout the state, teachers utilize old tests for practice to help the students become more familiar with the test format, feel comfortable with taking the test. And as many of the students were pleasantly surprised, some of the same passages showed up and some of the same questions. So while I'm not going to be, as I think all administrators, we're not going to be looking for much from the results of this year. I personally always think there's some benefit to having the students sit for these types of tests, especially with the young children. They develop a comfort level. They learn test-taking strategies. I think our teachers, in conjunction with the parents, do a great job of keeping the stress level down. So there's some, some value in the exercise, albeit really not much value this year in, in probably the data that we're going to receive. But it's good to have that behind us. Our fourth graders will take the science test in early June. Now, normally this time of year, we're very busy in preparation for a big event, a traditional event at the elementary school, which is our open house, and it's really a, a great night. And I look forward to the future when we can have our open house in a more traditional way where families and guests of the community can come into the building and see all the great things happening. This year, that's not the case, but we are doing a virtual open house. So our teachers and children are, are busy preparing some presentations that will be shared with families on Friday afternoon. This, this coming Friday, the fourteenth, the school will kind of send out a virtual open house presentation. A good chance for us to celebrate all the great things that have happened this year under somewhat challenging circumstances. So I'm really proud of all the work that's gone into that. And I'm also very proud of the, the efforts that our fifth grades in particular have been putting into the Wax Museum. This year, we will, we plan to host the Wax Museum on Wednesday, May twenty sixth. We are going to do the event outside. We're actually going to utilize our, our track and kind of set the museum up around the track. Students will have a certain number of invited guests that will come during different segments of the day and have a chance to, to see the Wax Museum in an outdoor environment. We also plan to let the younger students in the building have a chance to view all, all that great work. So we're looking forward to that. It's going to look a little different than the traditional way we set it up, but I'm pretty excited to see how it comes out outside. I think the kids have really done a great job. In fact, it, it was just last week or the week before, our PTA supported a professional photographer coming in to take some, some pictures of the children in their Wax Museum outfits. And they, they just looked great. They've worked really hard. And I think it'll be, you know, a really good showing. We, we will plan to video it for, for those that can't make it to the event. We'll post that on our website. I think that's, that's the update from the elementary school, Mr. Nichols. I don't know if there's any questions about anything I shared.
Great.
I, I do have one question. Thank you for that update. And, and I think doing that Wax Museum around the track is actually going to feel pretty special. Yeah. I think that's, I think it's really creative. So that's a lot of fun. I read a news day today that the opt-out rate for the ELA test, third through eighth grade on Long Island was pretty high. They said, it was based on a survey, so I don't know how projectable it is, but they said that in Suffolk County, it was about fifty-six percent opted out. So I was just curious, in our third through eighth grade, like what our opt-out rate was, or if you, if you have that information?
We had, we had a handful of students that, at each grade level choose to opt out, nowhere, nowhere near those numbers that you read today. I read that as well.
Yeah.
I was a little surprised that they were that high, but our numbers were pretty low as far as the opt-outs.
So the majority of students opted to take it.
Correct.
Well, that's, that's helpful. Thank you.
I just had a, a question slash request for the fifth grade Wax Museum. Do you have a sense as to when you'll be able to send info out to parents as to kind of the times that their kids will be doing it so that parents can take off from work and, or tell grandparents that might be traveling from afar? And the same thing goes for a fifth grade graduation, but I know that's, or moving up ceremony, but that's still a little bit longer, but I think parents are already starting to kind of wonder as to when they need to take time off.
Exactly. For the, for the Wax Museum, I'm actually planning to send out an email tomorrow, and then the invitations will send home with the students just to kind of make that special. And that will include the specific times that each cohort will invite their guests. And tentatively, and I'll be sending this out shortly as well, we're tentatively planning Thursday, the seventeenth of June for the fifth grade celebration or moving up. And I think, you know, we're getting pretty close to making that a firm June seventeenth date, and that will be coming out soon.
Any other board questions for Mr. Malone before we turn it over to Ms. Carriero? Great.
Thank you, everyone. So for middle school, we again had the testing, just like Mr. Malone went on about. So that went successful. And as Chris, you asked, we had a lower opt-out rate than expected, only a handful of students opted out this year. June seventh again will be the Science Eight exam. So the students that are enrolled in Science Eight will be taking that written exam, not, are the children that are in living environment. Our, two of our one-year appointments are doing an initiative for a wellness week in the middle school. So we're looking forward to that. That will be in the end of May, as well as Ms. Westoff's famous Whaler Worlds will also happen at the end of May. And then this Wednesday, we changed up how we do our orientation process because of COVID. May twelfth at five thirty is a Google Meet of a Q and A for middle school orientation. So this year, we wanted to do it differently because we realized when parents are on Zoom or on a virtual call, we don't get to, they don't get to see our presentations as well as they used to because it's hard to pay attention, and we're trying to practice what we preach of not having so much screen time. So Ms. Westoff and myself, as well as support staff from the middle school, created a bunch of videos and a website so that parents can click through at their own leisure to review different topics and hot topics of the middle school. And then during the orientation on the twelfth, we will introduce ourselves, give a brief overview, but it's the time for the parents to ask questions. There'll be an intense, of course, August graduation, hopefully fingers crossed wherever we are for the guidelines for COVID to help transition, as well as Ms. Anapoli and Ms. Rodriguez Mora, who got appointed for the August first start date for the new middle school assistant principal, will be visiting the elementary school and working with the fifth grade classrooms to introduce themselves and possibly tour over at the middle school too. So there's a big intense process for orientation from coming from fifth to six. As for high school, we've been in IB testing from May third to, and we'll go to like about May twenty first. AP testing will be in late June as well, early June, excuse me. And then in late June will be the Regents' abbreviated schedule with just the Algebra Living Environment, ELA, and Earth Science Regents. Whaler Day is set for May twenty eighth. We wanted to announce it just because of the remote and synchronous learning status of students. We usually don't announce it, but we wanted to make sure that we have participation going on. Mr. Bramhoff, myself, and Mr. Vine, and I've already started the intense planning for that. We've constantly had senior parent meetings to keep adjusting and monitoring the COVID situation as Mr. Nichols mentioned before. I have to say a special thanks to David Mora, who gave his photograph, photography services for free to do cap and gown photos for all of our seniors that wanted to. The High School Musical will be June third through June fifth. The June fifth will have that two PM matinee, as well as the seven PM showing. National Honor Society, all of the students that applied will be getting inducted. There'll be a video oath, but a tentative plan for an actual true ceremony to celebrate our eleventh and twelfth graders in National Honor Society because the twelfth grader currently did not get a true ceremony will be on, hopefully tentatively on June fifteenth outdoors. We've been having a ton of prom meetings. We have a prom meeting tomorrow in person at ten AM to walk the grounds. We have shifted the tent from a two hundred person tent to a four hundred person tent. We have a ton of parent involvement to help with that. And I want to say thank you to our local community because a lot of the food is being donated from local restaurants as well. And we sent out an email earlier today stating that we are switching it from just a senior-only prom to a junior and senior prom. And we will be allowing dates, but the guidelines for the dates, we will be, will be forthcoming once we get strict guidelines from the state. And as well as graduation, we updated on our last senior parent meeting that we held on Wednesday at five o'clock, that graduation right now will have four guests as, as the current guidelines. If guidelines shift, we can, we can do more guests. So hopefully we can sit in a more traditional fashion on the Hill, which is always so special to us. So I think that's about it. That covers the middle high school. If there's any questions.
Thank you, Brittany. Are there any questions from the board for Ms. Carriero? All right, great. Sounds good. Moving on to the consent agenda item, is there a motion for consent agenda items eight point two through eight point twenty-one?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion. Mary, can you open up the voting, please?
Mary, this is yours. I don't have access to computers, so I'm just going to tell you verbally.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's unanimous.
Great. On to section nine of the Agenda Committee Reports, nine point one. And again, for the public, if these are committee reports, we carry these over. Sometimes there is an update, sometimes there is not. Starting with nine point one, the Communications Committee, is there an update? Or would we carry that over?
I just have a brief update. The committee put forth two surveys recently, one for the community and one for the faculty and staff. The cutoff for that was last evening, so the results are now have to be analyzed by the committee, and I expect we'll present the findings at a future meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. It wasn't a, if I believe correctly, we didn't get a great response. Am I correct?
Well, at first glance, it appears we had a, a very good response, but many of the people didn't finish the surveys.
Yeah, it was long. Okay. Got it.
And that's both the staff and the, and the community one. But again, that's first, first, you know, look at, I, I need to look at it further.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Diversity and Inclusion Committee, is there an update that anyone would like to share from the board or from faculty or staff?
I've been asked to report on that, so I hope you don't mind. I'm going to just check my notes because I got some updated notes. The committee has been operating, there's a lot of activity enthusiasm on the committee. It's mostly operating in subcommittees, so, you know, I hear updates, but I'm not participating on all those. So if you have questions, let me know. I can bring them back to the committee. There's a handful of things I've been focusing on. One is they were looking at having a film project for students and their families, and they had gotten, that had to do with a topic related to diversity. They approached Mash Park, who agreed to host it, but then they realized if they were going to do it in the summer, it had to be dark. And so it couldn't start till nine thirty at night, which didn't make sense for a lot of the students and family. So they're now looking at approaching some other community institutions like the Psychopersonal Cinema and others to see about an indoor event. So there'll be an update on that probably at the next, after the next committee meeting. There's a subcommittee that, that had some ideas about professional development, and they did some analysis with some experts about some kind of workshops and professional development around diversity. And I, and I think that subcommittee is going to be setting up some meetings with the district administrators to run those ideas by them. And the last project they've been working on is the classroom libraries, which I think we've discussed as a board, and it had to do with having books that were donated. Some were donated, some were purchased around diversity, making sure that they were diverse authors and topics that were kind of accessible. There's been a lot of activity and positive feedback from what I understand from the elementary school teachers. And I think that the next step was to continue to talk to the, the principal of the middle high school to figure out how it can be utilized there, because obviously books are utilized in a different way than they are in the elementary school. And also to look at how do we continue to bring new books in that really reflect diverse topics and authors? So there's going to be conversations with the building administrators on how to do that successfully as well. And then there's a request to, to have the subcommittee on professional development to, after meeting with the administrators, if they feel comfortable with some of those ideas and some of the other ideas, the committee, to do a presentation at an upcoming board meeting. So they'll be working with the administrators to get through that process. And I think that's it. Any questions?
Oh, it sounds like it's very busy, so that's great. Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, they're very active and committed, committed members.
Great. I will then move to Nutrition, Wellness, Health and Safety Committee. If there is an update, if not, we'll carry that over.
I think it's just a quick update that we have committed members and are looking into possibly for next year, creating parent workshops on different mental health initiatives to support parents, because I think from COVID, people feel very isolated and want to start talking about what's going on in their houses and helping with supporting the school.
I think it's a wonderful idea. Thank you. Transportation Committee. If there is one, if not, we carry it over.
I can give a quick update, Mrs. DeSessa. On April nineteenth, our committee met. And very briefly, we kind of finalized our thoughts with regards to the extensive work that's been done on researching and talking about sidewalks around the school buildings and between the school buildings. So we kind of have a map that we're going to be presenting to our facilities committee, thinking that there may be some, at least research, further research and some work that could be a part of the long-range planning. So we believe that that, the work that we've done can be really helpful with increasing safety and flow between the buildings and from the buildings to different parts of the village. In addition, on the nineteenth, with the help of our Transportation Director, Maude Stevens, as well as, we have a salesperson who supports the purchasing of buses for the school district named John Clary. He works for Nesco. He helped set up an informational session for the committee on electric school buses, something that I think we've all been reading about, electric vehicles, more and more curious about, you know, how prevalent they're going to be come in our society. Recently, municipalities, I think it was just a couple of weeks ago, there was an article about New York City School District purchasing, I think it was their first electric bus and probably the first of many. But throughout the country, they're becoming more and more prevalent. Still new as far as the technology, but it was interesting for us as a committee to hear about the bus, learn a little bit. It was a real introductory conversation. And I think in the years to come, I know Ms. Buscemi mentioned that this year on the referendum later in May, we're using the Transportation Fund to purchase a new school bus, replenish our, our fleet. We, we have to do that on an annual or every few years. It may be something that we want to learn more about, talk more about as far as pursuing some electric vehicles as a part of our fleet.
It's exciting.
I mean, I think it's a great idea. If we can institute electric buses, if they would work, that, that would be great.
Yeah, the technology is really new, as I said, but, you know, it's only going to keep improving. So if it's something the board and the community would like us to pursue as a committee, you know, we're happy to continue researching so that we're, you know, in a good position if we, if we would like to go that route.
I mean, we can give you an answer now. I can go around, go around with the board. I, I personally think it's a good idea. I'll go around Sandy.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, absolutely.
Jordana?
Yes, please.
Alex?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah, I think it's excellent. Thank you.
Your goes.
We need to get in person.
Your goes.
Yeah, here. Sorry, I had you on you.
Okay, so it sounds like you have the will of the board, Matt, so in terms of.
Phenomenal, you missed me.
Yeah. Oh. You're on the second page, I'm sorry. Oh. I gotta get a bigger screen.
At least I'm on the page. At least I'm on the page.
Good. No, I think we're, as a committee, we'd be happy to do that work.
My apologies, Susan. I didn't mean to cut you off there. All right, great. So moving on to items for discussion, the Board of Education, the calendar for board meeting dates for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Did everyone get a chance to review that? Is there any feedback before we can, before we move that on to vote and approve, so everybody knows what the calendar looks like?
Looks good.
Yeah, I think at glance, it looks.
It looks fine. I mean, if we need to add, we'll add, but I think it's. I think it's good to move forward as is.
I agree.
I'm coupled with it.
So with that, we could save some time. Is there a motion to approve that?
Don't move.
Is there a second? I'll go second. Great. I know this, we're, we could vote orally on this for you, Mary. All in favor?
My screen, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Hi.
Hi.
Brian, can I just ask a question? The, the calendar, the way that it's presented, has this been, was this listed on the agenda publicly before tonight?
We've approved the district.
We approved the district calendar, this is just for the school meetings.
Right, just for the school meetings. So we don't need, right, we don't need to have additional public input on that, because this is really just about us conducting our business.
That's correct. That's why I said. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Great. So all in, every, it was unanimous, Mary.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Got it. Does someone have, sorry, yes, someone say something before I get to public input too.
I just want, I would like to know if Mary could possibly throw some dates out for us. Because I said we're getting towards the end of the year for our superintendent evaluation and our board evaluation, please. Just because it's, you know, halfway through May now.
Yes.
So if you could just, like, maybe just send us like five or so.
Email us some dates, Mary. That would be great.
And then, if you could send out the evaluation forms, that would be good.
Yep.
Okay.
You got it.
Thanks.
And, and Brian, can I tease something up that's related to the meetings?
Sure.
You know, we, we started, we moved to Zoom because we needed to move to Zoom. But we're holding classes in person. We're having a prom, we're having an in-person graduation. And, and while I believe that we've been able to conduct our business remotely and be effective, I still feel that it's more effective and more accessible in many ways if we can get back to being in person. So we are legally allowed to still be doing it by Zoom. We're not required to do it by Zoom, but I would, you know, again, I would suggest that we can be in that library and be safe, but conduct our business in person. And I'd like to see us move to that sooner versus later, if possible.
We'll take it under consideration as a board.
I agree.
Okay. Is there anybody here for public input number two? Now would be the time to speak. Raise your hand or put a question into the chat box. Mr. Fisher?
Kevin, Kevin Martin?
Yep.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Yes, I can hear you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. This is a question for, I think, Susan. Is she the liaison to the park?
Yep.
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. The scoreboard for the baseball field. Can you tell me who paid for that?
Off the top of my head, I'd have to take a look, but I think that if I can, Eric, do you know who paid for that?
Yes.
I think you were involved in that, am I right?
So, we, yes, the, okay, the school district purchased the scoreboard off the top of my head, slightly under thirteen thousand dollars, I believe it was, I budgeted for in the budget. We purchased it. The school owns the scoreboard. It is housed at the park. I would say it's similar to the soccer goals, where the school does have equipment that is down at the park, but that the school owns, but it's utilized. You know, it's permanently, if not semi-permanently placed down at the park. Okay, can you hear me, Eric? Yes, I can. Okay, so that can be taken out at the school's will and discussion.
We own it.
Okay, okay. So the school paid to have that put in. Is that correct? Yes, that is correct. I, I wouldn't see a scenario where I'd want to take it out because it's awesome. No, I, I understand. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
Great. All right, seeing no other hands. Is there a motion to convene into executive session to discuss real estate and collective bargaining negotiations?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Mary, if you could open up the voting, please?
Mary, I'm again, hi.
Hi. Okay.
For the public watching, if the motion carries, the board would then go into executive session, at the conclusion of which we would come out for the sole purpose of ending the public hearing. No votes. Board action or discussion will take place at the end of the meeting.
That's unanimous.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening, members and invited faculty to the executive session, the Zoom link in your mailbox. Have a good evening.
Good night.
Good night.